November the fourteenth, regular meeting Commissioners Court Liberty County, Texas. Uh, we do have a quorum established, Commissioner Carbalas, Commissioner, Commissioner Wittmeyer are here with us today. Commissioner Wilson is with us by way of Zoom. Uh, so we do have a quorum established. We do have business for the court today. If you would all, let's all rise. Lee's gonna beat us in the pledges and here's gonna lose some education.
Please face the American flag.
And to the Republic where witches dance.
Please face the Texas flag.
Ladies to thee.
Pray a big praise. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this day. Lord, thank you for Judge Knight and the commissioners and the work that they do. I ask, Lord, that you guide them and let them do the things that you would have them do. Lord, we ask for special prayer for Angela and Commissioner Wilson and ask that you be with them and comfort them, Lord. And Lord, we know you're in a great position, Lord, and we put them in your hands, Lord. Lord, thank you for the many blessings that you give us. Lord, as we approach this Thanksgiving holidays, Lord, we have so many things to be thankful for. We're thankful for our freedom. We're thankful for our friends, Lord. And I just pray that we encourage one another and, Lord, if we offend one another, I, Lord, I ask that we ask for forgiveness and forgive them just as you forgive us for our sins, Lord. Lord, be with us. Thank you for sending your son, Jesus, down on the cross for our sins. In his son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. We don't have any notices or proclamations today. Indeed, I didn't see anything come across this. And Lord, do we have any public comment? But we do have a presentation by our friends with 4H. And a annual update on the 4H program. So y'all come on up, Roy and Amanda, everybody come on up.
Well, this time, Commissioner, we are extended up on y'all a little bit this year.
Okay.
Our 4H kiddos are still in school. So I brought all of the extension agents with me today to visit with y'all.
All right.
And it's gonna be a little program highlights for the entire county.
If you would, so everybody will know. If you would introduce everybody, please.
So I'm Amanda Brooks. I'm the 4H Extension Agent and the current Department Head, AgriLife Extension Office in Liberty County. I brought with me Latoya Snod. She is our Community and Economic Development Agent from Prairie View. And Donna Gaps is our Liberty County Master Gardener President. She is also our part-time administrative assistant in the office. And then Roy Flora is Liberty County Ag Extension Agent. And Commissioners, tonight, y'all all have a little executive summary that we provided for y'all. This is programming that's been done January first through August thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. The one highlight I would like to share with everyone, um, from January first to August thirty-first, we had two hundred and fifty-one volunteers in Liberty County that donated six thousand nine hundred and four hours of their time. It is valued at two hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So they did work valued in that amount that was at no cost to anyone in Liberty County. Um, on the 4H side, I know y'all typically like to hear from the kids, but again, they're in school. I just want to highlight that we ended the twenty-two, twenty-three, four-H year with three hundred and fifty-three youth members. That was an increase of sixty-four members from the previous year. That was the largest increase in our entire district.
Woo.
So we got right to that. We currently have eight community clubs and two project clubs, which consists of our Liberty County South Club and Ducks to Dazzle. And so kids participate in all of those clubs. We had two hundred, two thousand, one hundred and ten youth participants that were educated in ag literacy through ag adventure programming efforts at community events and several school districts throughout Liberty County. We have an increase in kids that are participating in not only county, but district and state events. Of course, we know our kiddos show at three local livestock shows and major livestock shows across the state of Texas. And we have two state livestock ambassadors and one state photography ambassador that belongs to us here in Liberty County. So not only do they donate their time volunteering for us teaching classes, they share time across the state with other 4H members as well. And then at our banquet in August, we awarded one gold star recipient. For those of you that don't know, that's the highest level that a 4H member can receive. Then in county, we also award silver star, um, and bronze star awards. We have one silver winner, a reward winner, and three bronze star recipients. And then we didn't have any this year, but we typically award rising star, which is for first-year 4H members. So others than that, you know, again, district and state participation has increased. We've had members participate in events such as our district and state roundup, which is a combination of all the contests and different things that they worked for all year long. District and state horse show, junior and senior leadership lab. We had participants that hied at NASA, 4H Day at the Capitol. And then, um, members participated in the district and state photography contest and many other events. Uh, they're very interested in the virtual fishing that's been going on. We have several kids that do that. So they get to fish on their own time and then they turn in pictures and measurements and things. And we have several kiddos that have been awarded for participating in that.
Leon, you hear that? They got virtual fishing.
That's cool.
Yeah, they do catch the fish, though. But they're training their results online. And then just to update you, Commissioner Wilson, we are still working on shooting sports. We've had a couple of meetings recently. We have some volunteers that are getting trained next weekend, I believe. And so they're getting ready to get started with some practices for that. My volunteer leaders have set aside two thousand dollars to get them restarted with the programs, to purchase targets and consumable items that they need for that program.
That's great. That is great. I appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you. We appreciate y'all's support.
Again, I'm Latoya Scott. I'm the, uh, Community and Economic Development Extension Agent, uh, through Prairie View's Cooperative Extension Program. And this last year, I just started. I believe I met some of you at the previous banquet. That was my first weekend, my first weekend. And so this past year, uh, my efforts have been focused primarily on housing. Uh, with all of the development that's taken place throughout the county, I have hosted, um, in partnership with the City of Dayton. I hosted a, a housing fair in, also in partnership with USDA. And we did the five oh-two, um, new home purchase as well as the five oh-four, uh, for the grant opportunity, the ten thousand dollar grant opportunity for seniors, uh, to be able to provide repairs for their homes. And so with that, um, I have one point four six seven million dollars in certificates of eligibility, which means these are, um, people who have actually been approved for housing, that some of them have already purchased their houses, others are still in the process of going through the build. Because with USDA, you have the choice to either build, uh, purchase land and build, or you can go into, you know, an established development. And so really excited about that. Um, I also did a furniture assistance program in partnership with Houston Furniture Bank, uh, where we put together, um, financial literacy classes in addition to that, um, partnering with True Thing. And we did financial literacy and with that, they were able to then go to the Houston Furniture Bank for those qualified. And they could pick out furniture, you know, to aid in their needs within their homes. So really excited about that. Um, I also, this last year, we did as a group, as a, an extension family, we did a spring homesteading series where each of us agents took an area of our specialty. We all come together and we offered this, um, to the community, which was well participated. We had, um, a chicken class, beekeeping class. Roy did, uh, rainwater harvesting. We partnered with Master Gardeners and we did, uh, gardening one oh-one. We had a candy workshop that we offered as well. And so we found that that was very beneficial to the community and we are looking to do that again this upcoming year for the spring homesteading, um, series. I also with the Rural Workforce, um, Academy partnered with the City of Ames and Second Nature Safety. And what we did is we offered core construction and low voltage classes, uh, to the community. And with that, they, all of our participants left with several certifications, um, in addition to all the prep work that they needed to get jobs. Um, and so we're really excited about that. Uh, we graduated eight participants in, uh, the low voltage and we graduated five with the NCCER core construction. And so, um, those guys, we just wrapped up that program. And so they are currently going through, some of them have already begun work. Um, others, based on the company that they are pursuing, there were a couple more, you know, steps. Uh, so we're really excited about that, looking to bring some more workforce development in the upcoming year as well. So again, just really excited about all that, you know, we'll be working with, uh, this upcoming year. So that's an overview of how my last year has gone.
Thank you.
Uh, Roy Flora, I'm the County Extension Agent for Ag and Natural Resources. Um, most of my programming involves being directly involved with ag producers in the county. And so, uh, we've had a spring pasture enforcement seminar. Uh, we also did some BQA, Beef Quality Assurance Field Days with some producers. And through the BQA Field Days, we've al- we've also involved some of the local high schools, like Cleveland High School and Hart, uh, Hardman and, uh, Liberty High Schools to actually get some hands-on work for the kids. They come out to some of the producers and they actually get to process calves, give ear tags, give shots, cast rate calves, get out the mud and blood and have, and find out what, what it's actually like to be an agricultural producer. Some of them figure out they don't want to do that for a living once they get into it. Some of them are really excited about it. So, uh, it's all good. We provide opportunities for kids to make decisions like that. Uh, but also before I was an extension, I was an ag teacher for twenty years. So I have a special relationship with the ag teachers in around the county. So they're, they're very willing to participate in our programs, uh, as well. Uh, we also had a beach symposium. We just had one this year, but we had one, uh, we had one annually. And we also incorporate youth tracks into those to, to incorporate not only from Liberty County, but five other counties to provide, uh, uh, education to the youth in the beef industry, uh, to be able to do that. Um, also manage and oversee Liberty County Master Gardeners. We're gonna let Ms. Dawn talk about that. Here in a minute, we also have Master Naturalists. And we, the value that like Amanda said, that our volunteers contribute, not only financially, it's over two hundred thousand dollars, but Master Gardeners and Master Naturalists are close to a hundred thousand dollars just in their own right. And when, you know, the safety of value of thirty dollars an hour, we had to hire specialists to come in. But just what they provide to me, taking some of my load off to, to go to a program and, and go pick up tables and chairs and set them up, go get food while I'm at the program, while I'm introducing my speakers and my guests and kind of running the program. The, the, what they provide to me and the workload they provide to, to give me that relief and help me is just irmeasurable in my, and I'm really thankful to have them, uh, to go to that. Also have a, a horse committee, uh, that also served with my animal, uh, issues committee. And we had a meeting la- in September, and I called them my alphabet soup. We had, uh, emergency management, sheriff's department, the Liberty County EMS fire department, uh, all those. And we had a class come from A and M Vet School and they actually forgot information from all of these organizations for some disaster management on how we handle animals, large animals and small. And we actually have an animal issues plan now. I'm waiting on my committee to make the final, final edits in that. And we'll be sending that file out. So we do in the case of a disaster, hopefully we don't ever need to use it, but it's there to be in place to be able to handle, handle that situation. So, uh, and then what lastly, a couple of things that I do, we were, as, as I said, back to the university, we're involved in a lot of research projects. So I do some results, they call them results demonstrations. We look at insecticides. We look at bug trapping. We look at all kinds of things, uh, to be able to, to provide research to take back to our producers and say, look, this is research-based information to help them make better informed decisions. So, uh, pretty, again, appreciate all the volunteers, appreciate all the support from, from Judge and Commissioner Court. We couldn't do it without y'all, obviously. So we thank y'all for that. And then I'm gonna hand it over to Donna because she's our Master Gardener President. I'll let her shine on that.
And so I was asked to just get some highlights for the master gardeners this year. And we unfortunately had a small decline in our group and we're slowly building that back up, you know, various health reasons and people moving and so forth. But, um, between April and July, we held another, uh, we held a spring, um, training session. Uh, we had nine people participate in that and right now currently seven of them are working to complete their required, uh, volunteer hours for certification as a master gardener. Of course, uh, end of July, beginning of August, it was late summer, the completion of the pipe installation for water irrigation for the backyard teaching project. And we had an increase in our, uh, public, our open meetings to the public. Uh, we have talked on a myriad of topics from basic gardening, um, all the way up to gardening for your health, health and nutrition. So we've had, um, a lot of increase in, and interest in our, our program because of that. Um, right now, currently November, December, we do not really hold our monthly meetings up into the public. So master gardeners will resume with our meetings and programs, uh, and planned projects in January. And we do thank you all for your continued support with our program.
You bet.
Another irrigation is, yes, completed.
Yes. Uh, I stated that it had been completed in the, yeah.
It's okay.
We're across, so we're taking our, our, a lot, I think, extension office is to make a new teaching garden. And we've got like a, a plant, a maiden plant that we've sat down and done. Uh, we're gonna have a beehive out there. We're gonna have several maiden plants. We're gonna have some actual gardening going on. And I will walk through trail where people can actually walk up and see all of the things that we're doing and actually give more public access to master gardeners.
Long time coming, but hopefully we're doing our.
Slow process.
And thank y'all for letting us come visit with y'all today and for this report you continue to give our office. If anybody ever has any needs or ideas for any programming or things that we can do for y'all, please feel free to reach out.
Good deal. But now you have some of these handouts to give, or do you?
We do. They also, and I have a few extras. If you all have one, anybody needs it, don't worry.
You know, the, the one thing that we always, there you go. One thing we always talk about is people call and say, you know, there, there's nothing for the kids to do. You know, it's real dramatic. You know, my, yeah, there is. Yeah. You know, call, all 4H, all 4H. You know, it, I mean, they were active when I was a kid and, uh, FFA and 4H both, and they coincided. But, you know, we had a large membership, 4H in Dayton, you know, back in the sixties and seventies. I'm not one who won't talk about that. Yeah, that's a while back. But anyway, and it still is because you're adding new members. So think about, what does that tell you about the county? We're, we haven't given up on agriculture. We haven't given up on programs for the youngins to come and, and, uh, and join and thrive. And it is very, very well represented with y'all and with the youngins too, and their mom and dads. So thank you again. And keep up the good work, y'all. Appreciate everything you've done. Yeah. All right.
Thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am. All righty. Next on, uh, agenda is declare conflicts of interest. We have anybody has a conflict of interest, I'll need to add them on the agenda today. Thirteen fourteen. Uh, move on to the consent agenda. Y'all have an opportunity to look over that. And if you have, well, have any discussion or entertain a motion? Yeah, Duane, you have an add-on? I believe you do.
I'm your chat.
Okay.
Three thousand, ten dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay.
What was it?
Three thousand, ten dollars and seventy-six cents.
What is this one? County Attorney's Office.
All these things I'm gonna put in a request for new carpet. I think mine's about thirty-five.
Well, that burn-armed stuff in the county attorney's office.
It's gotta go. Yeah, yeah.
I feel that we approve the consent agenda with the way it's addition.
Motion from Greg, second to Bruce to approve with the additions as noted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote on favor, say aye. Likewise, may he, is that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to the regular agenda, uh, for Mr. Dennis. Come on up, Nick. The, uh, Senator approved county cyber security awareness training course for county employees with a current cost of five dollars per employee. So twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars, all employees of the county are required to take this course, whether you like it or not.
Definitely, yes.
You can't, you can't hire somebody to hit for you. You gotta take your shit.
Gotta do it. Yeah. Because we did offer this, uh, uh, at no charge for the last many, many years. But they, you know, the world and everything there now charging for this and it's something we have to have. So just to get approval and I could probably pull down my budget. No big deal.
Yeah.
Guys, give me the green light. Get a sign back up. Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on favor, say aye. Likewise, may he, is that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Nick got another here. It's considered approved, the down payment. Liberty County Sheriff's Office additional phones and phone system licenses. Uh, you wanna tell us a little about that?
Yeah. So this was actually approved back on ten-ten. Uh, I believe Chief or Sheriff had pitched it. I wasn't here. Um, this is just to, uh, get the down payment started so that anyone can order the equipment to get it going. Um, they do have a ton of new employees at the new building and we need to upgrade licenses and we need phones and.
Well, let's take care of the annex as well.
Uh, yeah, they're all part of the same system. So, yes, sir.
Twenty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Oh, I'm sorry. I said that wrong. The down payment is thirteen thousand four hundred. For the full amount of twenty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-five.
Down payment is what, Lee?
It's thirteen thousand, four hundred and one dollars for the down payment. Uh, the total amount was twenty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-five.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the thirteen thousand, four hundred and one dollars for the down payment.
Motion from Bruce, second Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote on favor, say aye. Likewise, may he, is that motion does carry. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, while we're talking about communications, uh, Chief Knox, what's the radio tower looking like these days?
So it's hours, it's, it's hours up, uh, with the holidays. Right around the corner, we're hoping to be up and running in the first part of January with everything down.
Okay.
Just starting.
A little slick to be, well, I'm gonna steal a tower today. Yeah.
It's pretty tall up there. Yes. I mean, may, maybe around Christmas, but realistically, look for the holidays in January.
Well, that's, that's just reality. It's what happened.
Getting there.
Yeah.
The last day, you're on there for the US notice. When that's done.
All right.
It's all down here from there.
Good deal. All right. Thank you. Next item, uh, Ms. Harris, you have, uh, considered approved the TCD RS cost of living assessment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you wanna tell us that?
I do. We have Ralph Wallace here with us today. And the last time the, uh, Commissioner of Court voted to give our retirees a raise was, I think, in two thousand and nine, when Bill Fitzgerald was the county judge. So it's been a long time ago since we've done this. Um, so Duane and I talked about it and we have, the court has elected a higher rate over the past several years with TCD RS. Our higher required rate has actually declined, but the Commissioner's Court has elected a higher rate, which has given us a better position with our TCD RS, um, funded ratio. And so we feel like it's a good time now to, um, talk about a ready start for our retirees.
This is going to affect in January?
It would go in effect January first, yes. And the options that, uh, you know, an option that I would recommend would be, uh, to select one of the choices that, that Ralph is about to go over that will not alter the, uh, rate at all. Um, so, but I'm gonna turn it over to Ralph Wallace with me as our, uh, what do you call the Ralph agent?
Well, this year, I'm the employer services representative for Texas County District of Darkness.
Okay.
But, um, y'all, uh, probably remember Tim Prowls, he used to be the rep and he would come in here. We had a little re-disparting, so to speak, a couple of years ago, and now y'all are stuck with me.
Glad to have you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. I've been at it for close to twenty years now. Uh, so every once in a while, something, I get a little hurtful.
Yeah.
But, uh, as Kim was saying, uh, e- every year the act for is take a look at y'all's plan. And they come up with this minimum percentage of your payroll budget that they think will fund that plan and help in there. And part of that rate goes to pay off, if the county has a liability, goes to pay off that liability over twenty years. That way it doesn't get passed off to the next generation of taxpayers. And Kim mentioned that's the minimum required rate. Well, y'all are doing a little higher than that, like making an extra mortgage payment. And so, which is great, uh, to, to be in that position and do that. So that's wonderful. Um, and what I want to discuss, uh, on these cost of living increases for retirees. Now, basically there's two types of, of COLAs y'all can give your retirees. One is just a flat percentage where you're telling your folks, hey, you know, we're just gonna be able to add a flat percentage on to your retirement check. You got it until you pass away. Okay? The other type is based on what the cost of goods and services were back when somebody retired, similar price index. And the fourth can choose to restore that loss of buying power over those years, buying it from ten percent to a hundred percent. But while one, kind of focus on right now is what Kim was talking about, um, a six percent flat COLA, basically giving your retirees a six percent increase. And that minimum, how it affects that minimum required rate, if the county's not doing a, uh, what would not be doing a COLA for next year, that minimum required rate is fourteen point fourteen percent of your payroll budget. Y'all are thinking of us seventeen point five two. That's that elected rate, a little higher elected rate. Now, doing a six percent COLA impacts that minimum required rate, it would go to fifteen point nineteen. So it still stays under that seventeen, yeah, point fifty-two. Does that make sense, y'all?
Yep.
So it still keeps you, gives you a little cushion, uh, as far as that goes. The cost, the estimated cost of, of doing that six percent COLA, you're basically paying on it as a county over fifteen years. So, uh, if you do start getting into that habit of doing these on a regular basis, you don't want to start to stagnate, yeah, um, then another option down the road, if y'all didn't know, the COLA issue. Let me calculate that call from y'all pre-planned thing. So just an option down the road.
Over fifteen years, um, amount of contribution we require, I looked at the charts and the number drops dramatically.
Yeah, do they have a copy of this at all? Okay.
Yes, they did, sir.
Okay. Yeah, you'll notice on pages three and four of this, um, and, and what I'm looking at is this document right here. You've got a column for current planning, a column for the six percent flat COLA. And on pages three and four, it's what Duane's referring to. Uh, based on the latest actuarial valuation, it kind of gives y'all some twenty-five-year cost projections on the rate. Obviously, uh, these are all done by the, by the educated guessers. I'm gonna actually read it simply. Uh, but at least helps y'all kind of look down the road for budgeting purposes. Take any questions?
Yep. Without a question, has anybody got it? Kim, what's your recommendation?
Um, I would recommend the six percent flat rate COLA that has the least, um, impact. Well, it, it's the highest rate with the least impact to the budget. The least impact to the funded ratio that we, we've, uh, been working to improve and, and have drastically improved. Um, and because we haven't done, uh, an adjustment for the retirees for well over decade, almost a decade and a half now. I would say six percent, you know, would, would work well for both the retirees and for the county.
Is that the minimum or the maximum that you would recommend? Out of curiosity, I mean, can we go more?
That's a maximum flat rate you can do. And Joe, the way that gets determined, uh, it does vary from what you get on the next opinion on what, uh, inflation did previous year. Usually our board votes to set that cap by either rounding up or rounding, rounding down from inflation did previous year.
Reason I'm asking is people are watching this. Reason I'm asking is people are watching this on YouTube and it, these are questions that the public would want to have an answer to and also the retirees, you know, so if that six percent is the recommendation, there it is. Duane, we, no problem there?
It was budget neutral for.
Yeah. Dude was budget neutral. Just want to make sure that everybody understands that. Yeah.
So. Am I looking at this right? The the total total con- contribution rate will be um seventeen point five two?
Yeah, Commissioner, if y'all kept doing what you're doing, even though your minimum required goes up, you're still paying above that by doing that seventeen point five two.
Cool.
Sorry. Go ahead, Leon.
What you got, Leon?
Motion, we approve this.
All right.
Okay.
So motion from Leon, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? That's a six percent flat rate, right, Kim?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, and um Kim, what I'll do is I'll get you the paperwork for the judge to sign and get back to me.
Perfect.
Okay.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Yeah.
Miss Kim?
Yes, sir.
Way to go.
Yeah.
Well, I know the retirees will will appreciate that.
They will.
Oh, I believe it.
All right, number four from Ms. Harris, consider and approve my favorite part of the year, the longevity pay. Uh for eleven thirty twenty twenty-three for years of service through December thirty-first twenty twenty-two. Kind of self-explanatory. If you worked it, you earned it, right?
Yes, sir.
There it is. Sheriff, you might get the longevity pay. Let's see what happens here.
I'll give it.
Yeah. I mean, your longevity, uh, yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, Mr. C. Consider and approve purchase of a twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Tahoe. Forty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars seventy-five cents utilizing uh state-approved, I guess it's contract, uh number twenty-two oh three zero zero eight R. And cost to outfit for eighteen thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars fifty cents. Utilizing the buy board contract number six nine eight two to be for Parkway Chevrolet. I almost want to start singing the jingle for the Sheriff's Department.
Put it all in there, the Canadian numbers.
Everything's right there. You know, it's it's amazing. Folks don't realize that the base cost of the vehicle itself is forty-eight thousand two twenty-eight. But outfitting the vehicle, look at that, almost nineteen thousand dollars. And uh you had to have the equipment. So it's not like just going out and buying a raw Tahoe and seeing drive it.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you.
Question from David, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six, pretty much the same thing. It's another twenty twenty-three Tahoe. Uh a little bit of difference in the outfit cost um from Parkway Chevrolet. Okay, I'll start singing. Motion from David, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, Harold, we got uh, let's look at a tractor. Consider and approve purchase of a twenty twenty-three John Deere thirty-three thirty-one G compact truck track loader. Track loader, okay. For eighty-five thousand two hundred forty-one dollars fourteen cents. So Commissioner Cor- uh Commissioner Whitmire can dig his ditches, okay? For eighty-five thousand two hundred forty-one dollars. Uh it's gonna be financed through John Deere Financial for two years at eight point six percent. Annual payments, this item replaces agenda item eight point one four on the October twenty-fourth, Fisher's Court. The finance terms are different. Okay?
Yeah, y'all, y'all already have this on. Thank you for mentioning everyone's game board. I told you fourteen. Uh so you've already approved the equipment, y'all approved the financing. And I I knew what it was last week, already forgot. The term were a little bit different once we started getting the paperwork. And so this is basically to uh, I think it's a interest rate that changed. My step came back what it was to last time. So basically, I didn't put it all back on there again.
It was probably lower.
Just brought it.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Harold, thank you. Number eight from Commissioner Wilson. Uh consider and approve an interlocal agreement between Liberty County Precinct Ford and City of Keneathick. Uh that's just your standard uh interlocal agreement, Leon.
Right.
Just a renewal, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine from our line barker group, uh tax attorneys, consider and approve the following resale bids on deliqued properties. Number one is Tijarina. Uh property ID is three four one one seven for thirty-nine hundred and forty dollars. Number two, Hernandez, property ID four nine nine six four for fifty-five hundred. Number three is Tijarina. Property ID is five oh five seven seven for twenty-two ninety. Uh number four is Tijarina. Property ID thirty-four zero eight eight for six thousand. And the whopping big one at the bottom is Tijarina also. For property ID six one eight six eight for ten thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. If y'all all have the opportunity to look over these.
Yeah, these, these are all in precinct two's. Deal over there. And what I really enjoy about this is all of them, but one, we're gaining hundred, hundred percent recovery.
Yeah.
So make a motion to approve all five. Thank you.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Uh.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number ten from uh Mr. Poston and Ms. McCarty. Consider and approve road use agreement between Liberty County and Baron Quality Homes LLC for the use of County Road twenty-two sixty-nine in exchange for twenty thousand dollars to be used to mitigate any damages caused therefrom. Now, Greg, this in your precinct? Is this one in your precinct? You'll see it. Okay. Yeah, here.
This is exactly what you just read. This is a standard road use agreement. Seems like this uh Baron Quality Homes LLC is is doing some work, uh maybe developing its provision at the end of uh County Road twenty-two sixty-nine. And uh in lieu of that bond, they are donating twenty thousand dollars for repairs after they have discontinued use of that road plan.
I think we ought to approve this. We're just proving now that it was accepted with the money.
Exactly.
And uh only about three more miles is built up there. It's actually above our standard. They built above our standard, but it's.
Make a motion to approve.
Aye. Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, uh for permits inspections, Melinda, you're here today. Foot doing better?
Yes, sir.
You're not chasing armadillos yet, are you?
No, not yet.
All right, let's check.
Still moving a little slow.
Okay. This is an information item only. It's a review acceptance of Liberty County Response Letter from FEMA, Community Assistance Visit. Okay?
Yes, we had a community assistance visit from FEMA. Um all of y'all are aware that we have all our special flood hazard areas all over Liberty County and the requirements that we are to keep track of them. Um we failed our visit. We had four items that came up. Um one of them was tracking, one of them was reporting. Um I I'm working on getting it taken care of, but this is going forward. This is their letter, our letter to them stating what we plan on doing, what we're going to take care of, and how we're going to get it taken care of. I am taking classes in floodplain management. I hope to have my floodplain management certification within a year. I say that it's two sets of crossed fingers because it's not easy.
Mm-hmm.
But this is something that's gonna be very important. And with more and more subdivisions coming in, the rice fields, it's gonna be more apparent. The tracking especially, um anybody that does a permit for any kind of building, any kind of building at all in this special uh flood hazard areas are required to have uh no rise certificates and um all the engineering certificates. We have to track them. That's all I can say about that one. I mean, it's just a letter stating, yes, we failed it, but this is what we're gonna do to fix it going forward.
Well, things have changed since twenty fifteen.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the way we do business. Thank you. And this is just an information item only. There's no vote required.
Yeah, I just made my signatures on the letter.
Okay. Uh number twelve, also from Melinda. Uh consider and approve the resolution maintaining Liberty County's participation in the NFIP National Flood Insurance Program and the CRS, which is a community rating system. Now, that is important as well.
That is very important.
Yes.
Um with with the the CAVs, with our our four failures and and we're working on getting them all updated and fixed. We don't want to lose our NFIP rating. Um that gives everybody in Liberty County a discounted rate on their flood insurance.
Mm-hmm.
So that's very important, you know. So there's a lot of, you know, low income housing, but they can still afford the flood insurance with the discounts.
Yeah.
So it's imperative that we keep this up, keep it going. Cause I don't want to be here if anything happens, but um I'm working on and make sure everything's taken care of over and above important.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve that.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, Melinda. And don't sit down yet. You've got a few more to go. Uh number thirteen is consider and approve the replat of Camino Real Lots forty-seven, four eighty-eight and eleven twenty-four. LJ Engineering Letter of Approval is attached to the packet. Can you describe this to us?
This is going to actually be a Dollar General. It was originally done as um residential. So they bought the three lots, they were converting it to one lot and making it a commercial site.
Or is this something?
It is on the streets down. It's it's inside Camino Real.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion?
We'll probably have the three more of these coming.
Yeah.
In the next year.
Dollar stores or?
Dollar general, yes.
Well, you know, the whole thing is folks talk about, you know, the opportunities, you know, for well, convenience for people that live there. And then also you look at the the revenues that are generated, you know, for a school district and for the county.
Absolutely.
And uh there it is. I mean it.
Well, it's funny because the Dollar Generals, a lot of them have expanded into carrying some grocery items and fresh produce. I mean, I went into one in uh Hardin, and they had fresh apples and bananas and stuff like that. Wow.
They got Blue Bell.
The grocery store just for a quick fix.
Yeah, they got Blue Bell. Come on.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah. All right, uh no further discussion. Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fourteen, consider and approve the acceptance of the Santa Fe subdivision, section six roads in the county maintenance and releases maintenance bond. LJ's Engineering Letter of Approval is attached with noted considerations in the packet. You want to describe the noted considerations?
Yes. The intersection of Long Branch Creek and County Road thirty-five fifty have been repaired, but the erosion of the embankment has not been addressed. The proposed culvert protection head wall was not constructed early approved construction plans. The approved plans called for five four by eight box culverts. Instead, they installed eight sixty inch HDPE joints or heights, and it's, they said it's only in two percent decreasing capacity. Main concern is if you have your packets, I sent you all the pictures, is it's already eroding, seriously eroding. So LJ is recommending all the others in this section, all except for this intersection. Because as you can see by the photos, it's not gonna be long and we're gonna have another issue like we did in the home row area.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
It's just gonna, it's just gonna keep going. And then then LJ's main concern was, you know, the in in the plans, the original construction plans, they were supposed to have concrete head walls and that was not done.
Okay.
So LJ recommends the county adopt Santa Fe section six excluding the drainage structure at the crossing of Long Branch Creek and County Road thirty-five fifty, which is real distance drive.
Yeah, what's about just looking more?
Leon, you looking at it okay? Yeah, okay.
It's leaving the drainage structure where?
It's leaving the drainage structure.
So can we approve part of this agenda item, not the other? But are we gonna probably make it approved all of the other?
We could do that. Just tell the developer that they need to finish what the original plans. Okay, get it through.
Make a motion to table. There you go.
I've got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg to table. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, pardon?
Make a motion.
Uh Bruce, second from Greg. All approved, uh except for Commissioner Whitmire. He was abstained. Number fifteen. Consider and approve the acceptance of various requests for Moss Ranch subdivision drainage. LJ Engineering Letter of Approval is attached to the packet. You want to talk about these variants a little bit?
Our drainage ditches call for six foot bottom widths. Um they are, Moss Ranch is requesting the acceptance of V-shaped ditches. And the last Commissioner's Court, we approved them taking care of the top parts of their ditches and not being anything high county. And this is in addition to that. They want to do, it's it's still the correct amount of volume. It's just they don't want to dilute the the bottom. They're just wanting to do V-shaped ditches.
Yeah. Scott, is this your development? You want to give us a little bit insight on it, please?
Okay, so as last meeting, what we did, we took out twenty feet behind backup lots.
Yeah.
We took that out so we could maintain that drainage canal that goes from twenty-two seventy-four to the pump. And we're gonna make our H O, our H O I are gonna maintain that whole field. Y'all will not have to do that.
That's in perpetuity, right?
Yeah, we're just gonna.
Okay, all right.
We're just gonna take it all.
I'm worried about my commissioner over here.
Greg's not gonna have to deal with any of that. So so what we didn't want to do is take forty feet out to make that six foot bottom. That's not much difference. The the volume of water is the same. As far as. As far as the hydraulics.
I'm gonna approve.
Yeah, the channels and dishes appear to be hydrologically suspicious.
Got a motion from Greg and a second from David to approve uh the consideration of explanation. Is there any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That does pass. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh Melinda, we have number sixteen for you. Consider and approve the acceptance of Moss Ranch subdivision construction plans, the final drainage plans and the final plat. That's pretty self-explanatory.
With the acceptance of the V, this uh subdivision, this is uh section one. It's one block, fifty-two lots with six reserves. It's in precinct two, Tarkington School System and Tarkington S U D Waters.
Scott, how many total uh lots will there be?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five. And what's the average projected product cost? projected product cost?
Three fifty and above.
Three fifty and above, okay. So three hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes are going to be in this subdivision. It'll be a hundred and twenty-five total when it's a complete build out.
What's the size of the lots, Jake?
Size of the lots?
Three quarter acre.
Three quarter acre.
Three quarter acre.
Yeah.
Give or take.
Three quarters of an acre, Leon.
Thank you.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen from Melinda. Uh, considering approved request from River Ranch Two Investments LLC for the acceptance of roads in the River Ranch Estate, section two, and begin two-year warranty period on the roads. LJ Engineering Project Number two-nine-seven-three dash zero-three-two-two B, uh, six point one. Certificate of substantial completion and maintenance road bond is attached in the packet. And Bruce, you had the opportunity to go, uh.
Yes, I did. Those, those roads as the rest of them, uh, I wish all of our subdivisions looks like this.
Thanks.
Uh, make a motion to approve.
Okay. Uh, motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve. Call for discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
I know we kept you up for a while, okay? Uh, number eighteen, uh, from County Attorney's Office. Uh, consider and approve the solicitation of bids for solid waste disposal for Liberty County, Texas. Y'all remember we did an extension for ninety days in last court meeting, uh, to allow us this opportunity. Catherine, do you have anything else to describe?
Um, I just want to reiterate that at the last special meeting, we signed an extension with Frontier for that ninety days. And, um, we indicated that this is the direction we were going, we wanted to go in or the court wanted to go in. So I would like to turn it over to Harold and do what's doable, uh, in that ninety day period.
Uh, as far as getting proposals back to court, we can do that in December. I just remember last time we did the, uh, changeover from the public to Frontier, it took an all the time because they had to get their equipment out, the new people had ordered, we didn't. So we're looking at what, you know, February one fourteen.
Yeah.
It's probably doable, but we, we'll do it as quick as we can. But I did want to ask you all something. We've been doing, uh, when we've messed up out the last few years, been the contracts that are renewable. And I don't like to go too far, but two, one-year extension at the same rate, same term.
Yeah.
This one, because it's so complicated, so much to it, I'm going to see what y'all's opinion because it's your decision. If you want to put some kind of escalation in there for those two years that we, we can both consider, like it's we can do a five percent. We should do a percentage of the CPI. I don't know what the, what the wording is now, like a check. Uh, but that way it gives them a little incentive because, you know, the way, the way our economy is, you know, the very rarely going to be able to do it same price. And, and you want to post something like culvert, when we offered them the extension, they said, no, we had to redo it. So at least on this kind of contract, because of what it is, uh, I don't want to get y'all depending. Do you want to do that fine? Or do you want to leave it at the same rate that we found here? What we don't really do, so we got to put it in the bid documents.
I don't have a problem with that, but, uh, I do, well, all the calls, but.
Uh, you know, we're going to address all those things that you have problems with. There's going to be measures that's carried out.
Okay. Well, it's court's pleasure.
Earl? Yeah, you make the motion. Do you, uh, do you, uh, suggest that we go ahead and approve this?
Yeah, I mean, I would approve the solicitation and I don't think you really have to approve what actually goes in the bid document, but I'll bring that back to y'all now that it's out there. I just want to get y'all's idea. We need to even include that.
Motion, Greg.
Yeah. Leon made the motion.
Second.
I wrote, uh, we calculate increases not to exceed five percent for subsequent years. Is that what we're doing or we're just not addressing it?
Well, I would say leave it open to, uh, or we put in there, but y'all are going to come back and approve that.
Okay.
Uh, and we need to see what, what I say, when the economy is, that's I'll see what other people are doing, what they're using.
So it's Leon and?
Leon and Bruce. You know, the, uh, week before last, um, I like to go to these, uh, LJA sponsors, uh, by annual uh, economic summit. I guess that's the best word for it. And they talk about what the economy is, not just in the Houston area, but in Texas and nation and then worldwide, and what we can look forward to uh, potentially in the future, short term and then long term. And of course, you know, looking at inflation rate, which was at about nine percent, now it's down to three point six percent. Um, that's good. Uh, four percent is acceptable from last I read about it. The, uh, the other things that came into play were the potential for recession. And that's a scary word, but, uh, pretty much the the forecast, uh, said there will be no recession, but if we do have one, it'll be in the first quarter of twenty-four. And what would be the nemesis for that? And I think probably the national election would be the, the starting point. So you know, you tighten your belts, you loosen your belts, you work your tail off to make sure that everybody, uh, their needs are, are met. And that's our goal, is to have the teamwork in place to make this function the way it should. And I think we've done quite well. And I need to applaud the, uh, the groups that work together. And that would be, uh, Dwayne's office, uh, Kim and the commissioners everybody that makes decisions to, uh, to make sure we, we handle the dollars as best we can. And I believe we've done so. And Dwayne, thank y'all. Angela, thank you. It, uh, Kim's left. But, uh, I do know that we've managed to be able to help the Sheriff's Department out dramatically since twenty fifteen. It, uh, now if we can just get some industry in here, we can help everyone else out dramatically, okay? And that's the goal. That is the goal. So we had the, uh, considering approve solicitation of bids solid waste disposal for Liberty County, Texas. And I'm off my soapbox. Had a motion, Leon, a second from Bruce. Opportunity for discussion and hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Say the best or last, Lee, okay? Uh, from County Clerk Lee Chambers, consider, this is number nineteen. Consider approve the renewal and reinstallation with training of the Vista Solutions Group election software, the amount of six thousand dollars to be paid through elections expense. Number, uh, zero-one-zero-four-zero-zero-one-dash-three-two-zero-zero-zero. That's the account number. The yearly renewal payment due next year will be fifty-two hundred and fifty dollars. The software was purchased by the elections administrator with commissioner's court approval in twenty twenty for twelve thousand dollars. The data management software will be used by the tax assist collector's office, vote registration, and by the county clerk's election department for elections. Want to elaborate some more on that, Lee?
Um, well, one of the things that disturbed us when we took over was the lack of software. And we did a lot of research and we found that there was software purchased. Um, it just wasn't anywhere in the office. Uh, this particular software is used by all the counties around us. Heather uses it. It's, it's very, uh, uh, you know, well, well installed across the state. Uh, we had paid twelve thousand dollars for it and the EA just didn't decided not to pay the maintenance anymore. So it went into a, a limbo. Um, however, the software is probably on some computers that we don't have access to. If you understand what I mean. So we have to re-install it. The other thing, this is primarily voter registration, although there's some movement to make us, uh, scan the ballots. You know, which for this upcoming elections could be thirty thousand. If this software would help with that, if we have to do that, it would also allow us to all share access to the images, which we need. Uh, it'll make it go a lot faster when we're trying to process things, uh, for these two really big elections coming up. So I think it's worth the money to try to get the software back installed, get our data back on it and get Ricky's office and my office trained on it so we can utilize it for the presidential. Uh, it's a good, it's a good program and, um, it's just a shame that it got dropped, but, uh, they're giving us a pretty good deal to get it back up and running. So the six thousand is two pieces. I think part of it's the installation and the rest of it's training and uh, moving the data back on into the, uh, the software, so.
How many, um, registered voters do we have in the county?
Fifty-one, two hundred and six at the moment. It's going up.
It is going up, okay. And what's your anticipation for voter I mean, commitments, I guess, in the, the, the spring?
I'm anticipating for the March election to be somewhere around twenty-five, maybe up as much as thirty thousand voters. And a little bit more than that for closer to fifty percent for the presidential, so.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I think we're going to, I think we're going to hit that, maybe a little, little beyond fifty percent for the presidential, so. Uh, we have a lot of interest in the upcoming election because there's a lot of people on the ballot locally. And, uh, and then of course the presidential brings out a lot of people.
Yeah.
Um, all of the, uh, mail-in, uh, ballots, all of the, everything renews in January. So Ricky's got to send out all new cards. We'll have a lot of more people registering. We'll have a lot more people asking for mail-in ballots, et cetera. So um, this stuff allows us to handle that and keep those images and share it among us. So we're not calling them going, can you please email us the so-and-so, you know, registration person, so, which is what we've been doing. And they've been keeping them on PDFs, which I think Nick set it for them. It's just not an ideal way to manage it. And this software is designed to do exactly what we need to do. And we own it. We just need to re.
Re-up it.
Re-up it. We need to reinstall it and start using it again, so.
Okay, well, good, good explanation.
Make a motion to approve, Dave.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty from Ms. Chambers also, uh, consider to approve the canvas of the special election on November seventh, twenty twenty-three. So we had a few items on there, mostly.
Yeah, all those propositions.
Compositions, yeah.
The only one that didn't pass statewide was the, uh, increase in age for the, uh, judges. Um, the Cleveland ISD election, bond election did not pass. But the E S D and the two my districts passed. And, um, this is, this is it. That's what all it suffers for. So we can produce this giant thing.
Yeah.
Uh, which I have to upload as soon as y'all locate it to the Secretary of State today. So um, we are going to do a mini partial manual count, just to verify the machine's performance on Thursday. But other than that, we are done with this election. Uh, I think we should be getting Wayne about thirty-five thousand back from the, uh, local entities that contracted with this.
One of the explanations that I would like to share, and you helped me on this.
Okay.
The, uh, the Plum Creek Mud District.
Yes.
And that question came up, you know, where is this? Well, this is Kingland Development Group, okay? And they are partially in Montgomery County, partially in Harris County, partially in Liberty County.
Right along ninety-nine.
Right along ninety-nine. The, uh, that portion, I believe, is that they were looking at and one of the items, uh, was it actually part of this in City of Plum Grove? So if I'm not mistaken, so it is. So, you know, a lot of folks were asking, you know, where is this? Where is it? And why are there only three votes? Well, I've told y'all before, and I'm just going to go ahead and run through this again. That's how development law works in the state of Texas. Okay, I know rabbits, it's okay, but I'm going to jump down this hole for a minute. Okay, the, uh, you set up a, a mud district and you have the delineation of the lines of the district itself. And you can, you own the properties and you can move in one person and they, they, uh, establish residency there. And then they can vote and they're going to vote for it, okay? So it's nothing shady at all. It's just following the law.
That's evidently the, uh, standard operating procedure for these because it's a, it's a big empty area. They put a trailer on it. They put people on it. They register to vote at that location and then they vote for the, uh, uh, creation documents for these. So if you notice the mud only had one vote, but that's all they need and that for their tax creation and the, uh, the management district for Plum Creek, uh, they had the two, but.
The two or three, yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's kind of an unusual thing and it's, you know, it's a little bit.
It's just one of the argument points that we having to go to legislature and ask them to help us with laws.
Well, whoever buys those things will be subject to whatever these people just voted on. So that's the, the downside of it is the people don't really get to say so in it, but they will know when they buy it that they're part, that that's part of the cost of purchasing.
Correct.
The property, so.
Correct. Now, the other side of that, that one particular area is going to be mostly, uh, commercial property, you know, so there'd be some light industry there as well. So it's going to be, what we're looking at was a portion that's going to be in Liberty County. So that would be a uh, a help to the Cleveland ISD and to the county and to City of Plum Grove for those portions which were in the city as well. So just letting you know, there's nothing shady about this. That's just the way, um, just the way the law is stated for the state of Texas, if you had to false. So one vote, one and all, yeah. And one other case, I think three votes, one and all. That's why there was, nobody saw anything about this on their ballots except the person that lived in that district itself. Now, getting back to the, uh, canvassing of the special election, November seventh, what's court's pleasure? Yeah, Greg, second from Leon to approve canvassing of the votes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries.
On a, on a happy note, uh, we did outperform twenty twenty-one.
We did?
Uh, we came in around twelve percent and, um, we passed up their numbers by, by a bit. So the turnout wasn't great, but it was better than previous performance. So you know, uh, there was some interest if people did, did come out and vote, especially here at the end, so.
Y'all did a real good job. It was, I had a lot of compliments on the ease of the voting.
We've got a lot of new people. This was their training time. So, uh, we're, we're making notes of problems that you're getting ready for and trying to plan out. And in fact, I'm going to be working on the contracts this week for the primaries. So March, March fifth is coming fast.
Welcome to adjourned, say.
I know you're waiting on that. Uh, I got motion to adjourn, got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Bye guys.